If you work hard, you can't succeed.
I won a Grammy like they say, man. Whoever thought a dude out the projects win a Grammy?
It's a blessing to be out here to see my boy get this key, man. So, I mean, we gotta, we gotta just keep going. This is all motivation and inspiration, you know what I'm saying? So, rise up, we got it.
Win, 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 let's go.
It's called win. Win, 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 win. F everything else. Win, 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 win.
He makes me wanna do better in everything I'm doing.
I'm here because I get to watch someone who I watched grow up, started from the bottom. And he get a key to the city, which, you know, everybody don't get nothing like that.
He's special, he has really good songs.
J-Rock continues to give back to Watts. He's handing over a $5,000 check to his community of Nickerson Gardens. And he helps put on a yearly music concert for free here with a star-studded lineup.
I remember when he played on our basketball teams. He decided that he wanted to go towards that rapping and singing. He was frustrated a few times, but he stayed the course.
I think it's important that we highlight that it doesn't matter where you come from, that anything is possible.
It just feels good, you know what I mean? Coming back, giving back, and then, you know, just showing these young kids that, you know, whatever you stay focused on, productive and positive that you're trying to do with your dreams, never give up because look, look at this.
And what better candidate to receive the first key ever to the city of Watts?
He is one of my favorite artists. J-Rock, by the way, won that Grammy award just this year. But he says he has even bigger plans for the future. The World Strict Curl Championship flexed some serious muscle during a competition at Venice Beach. But the day was about more than just physical strength. It was also about the strength of the human spirit.
Today's the C.T. Fletcher Strict Curl World Championship at Venice Beach, AKA Muscle Beach, California.
And we got competitors from all over the world here today. Curl here, everybody knows how to do a curl. But the strict curl, the difference is you have to keep your head, your back, and your butt up against the wall, which makes it a lot harder. You're fighting gravity plus the weight.
Today, I think there was over 50 guys, a lot of women. It's for teens, men over 50, men under 50. It's for everybody.
It's an amateur event. It's free and open to the public.
I started in 1986 because I was skinny. I wanted to bulk up. I wanted to be bigger and be able to do stuff like that. It's very unique because Mr. Fletcher, AKA Pops, he's bringing this back to Venice Beach. This is what Venice Beach has been missing.
Actually, C.T. approached me. And at that time, C.T. was in pretty good health. At least we thought. And through a chain of events, he discovered he had some heart problems.
Well, I had open-heart surgery the first time in 2005. And at that time, they put an aortic valve in, a metal aortic valve. That lasted for 13 years until last year, when I had to have a heart transplant.
For him to come back today and be here, I can't even tell you what it means, you know? And C.T. Fletcher set the world record for the strict curl right here on this stage 37 years ago.
I set the world strict curl record of 225 pounds in 1995. And that lasted for 25 years until a guy in Russia broke it.
It's more than just a competition. It's a celebration of him coming back. It literally is him coming back home.
I flatlined a total of five times, but I'm still here, and it's still my set, and I'm talking to you. Now, I just try to tell everybody about donor awareness. It's so important to be a donor. It's so easy to fill it out. You do it online and save somebody's life. Because a donor saved my life, so that's my mission now. Save people's lives.
If you want to come out and see something you've never seen before, come out to the home of the greatest outdoor bodybuilding shows on earth.
It's not about how much you curl. It's about coming out here, supporting your fellow competitors, and just having fun.
We are all the same under the bar. All races, all national, no politics, no religion. Everybody's the same. I want people to love each other. It's so important. I don't have time to waste on being prejudiced. I don't have time to waste on hating people. Life is too short. It can be gone just like that, I know. So, we don't got no time to be wasted on stupid stuff like that. Love each other, man.
If you're a contractor looking to do business with the city of L.A., there's no better time than the present. The city of L.A. recently held an event called Accessing L.A., which gave independent contractors a chance to connect with L.A. city departments.
Accessing L.A. is, you know, one of the city's, you know, bread and butter events when it comes to doing outreach with our business community. We host about three of these a year. The city does work with so many contractors that this outreach is such a critical component so that when we have projects, we really truly get the best of the best.
Today is all about saying, be a part of this. Don't just watch, but know that we want you. We want you to be a part of this and bring what you have to this table. We have representatives from many of our departments sharing the opportunities they have contractually. We don't want the business to see the city of L.A. as a standalone entity, but rather one with open doors and open arms, embracing all who will come to help us make this place what many people believe it is and what we selfishly speaking know that it is, a place of opportunity.
For more information on getting in touch with L.A. city departments, visit accessingla.org. War veterans and city leaders mark Memorial Day. The L.A. River is now open for recreational fun, and the Echo Park community breaks ground on a new skate park. All this in City Beat.
El Serena recently hosted two Memorial Day commemorations. Veterans and their families gathered to pay their respects to local hero Guy Gabbaldon, as well as those individuals who fight to defend our democracy. Angelenos, got your wetsuits ready? Yep, it's that time again as the L.A. River opens for kayaking and fishing season. In both the Sepulveda Basin and Elysian Valley, the river is the place to be for all kinds of fun summer recreational activities. So, see you there. And in Echo Park, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell breaks ground on a long-awaited skate park. The 7,100-square-foot park adjacent to the Echo Park Rec Center has been over 10 years in the planning.
Hundreds of Angelenos walked in downtown L.A. for a good cause. The United Way Home Walk helped raise awareness and funds for those experiencing homelessness.
Because everybody deserves a home.
Home Walk is an important event, and a lot of people come out because homelessness. There are 53,000 homeless neighbors on the streets of L.A. County, and we're here to raise funds and awareness for that issue.
This event is important for me because we're trying to help out the people that don't have anybody to help them out. A lot of these people don't have anybody they could depend on, and nobody's doing anything for them. Half the time, they're forgotten, neglected, or ignored. So, we're here to remind everybody that we're here and so are they.
Everybody for one common goal, and that's to help us get affordable housing and services for our homeless population.
They should be more on top of things and find out who we are.
I mean, everyone has a journey, right? But everyone assumes everybody that's on the street wants to be on the street. But in my situation, it's medical. And then the hospital morning I was at home and lost my place. The situation here is at crisis level.
It's a huge problem. I engage with homeless individuals on Monday through Friday, trying to help them to get off the streets.
I mean, it's just ridiculous that we're this country, this powerful, and, you know, we've got this many homeless people on the streets.
Yeah, so we had over 10,000 people that showed up today for Home Walk, and we've raised a million dollars. And we're gonna work with our community partners to make sure that money goes into the community and helps our homeless neighbors into the stability of a home.
This event is gonna bring up awareness of the problem, get people involved.
Pretty much like send the message to the kids, how hard, how difficult to live out on the street, and anything that we can help.
Today was a great day, great turnout. We used to have the Rams kids zone, the Rams joined us this year, so it's been a great day.
I'm an architect and engineer by profession, but I've been disabled. Got rods in my back and spine, and that's why I run. It got me out of the wheelchair, and I want to do more of these and run for, you know, charity and for causes.
Take part in a Family Nature Club Day at the L.A. Zoo. Join the fun and celebrate the 121st Philippine Independence Day Parade and take a class to learn some Bollywood Indian dance moves. All this and things to do.
Venture over to the L.A. Zoo every second Saturday for Family Nature Club. This event provides opportunities for families to share nature experiences in a variety of activities, like fort building, nature sorting, and water play. Connect to wildlife and each other in new and magical ways at the Family Nature Club happening Saturday, June 8th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more info, visit tickets.lazoo.org. The historic Filipino Town Independence Day Parade rolls into gear at the Filipino Cultural Center of Los Angeles. The parade celebrates the 121st Philippine Independence Day with an early-morning parade around historic Filipino town. Parade on your own floats or convertibles, march in costumes or team uniforms, or just watch from the sideline, taking in this event that promotes Filipino pride and culture. The historic Filipino Town Independence Day Parade takes place Saturday, June 8th at 1740 West Temple Street. For details, call 213-908-5780. Learn how to dance Bollywood style. The Chinatown branch of the L.A. Public Library is offering a fun class, teaching dance and movement for all levels. Led by Monica Sarin, this class is inspired by the high-energy music from Bollywood Indian movies, where every song has a story and every move has a meaning. Try your hand at Bollywood Indian dancing, happening at the Chinatown Library, 639 North Hill Street, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. For more info, visit lapl.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayman Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
This is 911.
I have bought some Chinese food and it's not a par.
You're calling 911 to get a husband, yeah.
911, we're here for a wedding.
I flip up her door and calls it gets the time. I need some stinkers. How big is this waiter? He's a little one. Do you need a ride?
Yes, yes, yes.
I asked for four different times to make me a western barbecue burger. I want my hamburger rice.
Good morning, good morning. Please take your seats. Today is Friday, June 7th. I want to welcome you to our Valley City Hall. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Smith moves, Wesson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves, Corretts seconds, continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 5 to Tuesday, June 11th. A corrected Plumb Committee report has been posted and circulated for this item.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered, continue.
Item 1 is an item noticed for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, there are cards.
Continue.
Items 2 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held. Budget and Finance Committee reports for these items have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's hold number 2. Let's vote on the other item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll to have you late to vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, next.
Item 6 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on that item?
Yes, there is a card on the side.
All right, let's continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go, before we go into our presentation program, I'm gonna try to take some of the cards from the public. So, these are general public comment cards. Do we have Stacy, Tammy, Peter, and E.V.Y.H.? If I've called you, please come up. You know, just come up and identify yourself. Welcome.
My name is Tammy, and I have a letter I'd like to give to each council member, but I only made six. I didn't know there was gonna be as many.
Okay, well...
One, starting with Paul Corretts, who is my council member. So, if you could spread them out, that would be great.
Go ahead.
So, tell me, I start now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm here today to ask that you allow homeowners who live in their homes six months out of the year the ability to take two separate bookings at the same time, do the same thing that you were considering for vacation rentals, which is one vacation rental per person in addition to being able to rent one room in their primary residence. This in turn allowing two units to host out. So, why not do the same for short-term rental homeowners such as myself? Or might I suggest you pass what Laguna Beach just passed? I think it was yesterday. They grandfathered in existing units and banned new units from coming on the market in residential area. In conclusion, I would like to say that I would be devastated if I cannot at least rent two rooms in my property that I have lived in for 20 years.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you. Thank you, next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself. Yes.
Hi, hi, everyone. It's nice to see such friendly faces that I've spoken with before. My name is Stacy Slichta, and I'm a member of Upper L.A. as well as a PTA board member at Carpenter Community Charter. On Monday, Mr. Krikorian attended the Burbank Airport Commissioners Meeting, and I want to thank Mr. Krikorian for coming and speaking. The meeting on Monday resulted in a number of our critical first-time issues admitted by the Burbank Airport Authority. The flight path has shifted over areas that have never received aircraft previously and are too low. They returned to historical flight, and they would like to return to the historical flight path. The Burbank Airport Commissioners and Authority have also publicly asked L.A. city officials and law 律 to help them because you have the power to do this. The fact that law 律 and the city have gotten a potential fix to the Van Nuys issue in a few short months shows how much power you really have. The fix has six procedure changes. The comment period of one of the procedures ended June 1st, and 3, May 16th.
Thank you.
The rest on June 18th.
Thank you. Next speaker, everybody gets a minute. Next speaker, please come forward, identify yourself. You are?
Hello. Hello. I'm in the series. I'm in the entertainment industry. My business partner got in a very bad accident. He's been 18 months in a hospital. So, to survive, I thought about Airbnb. And we would really love to add more room. That will really help us. We're not corporate, we are homeowners, you know? So, and a lot of poor people cannot afford to go in hotel in the valleys and plus. Plus, my specialty became with pets. And I want to say that the money we make, you make money too. Last year, you made $50 million out of Airbnb. So, everybody can make money. We're in a blue state, right? We can all make money, we can all help each other. And when there are catastrophe like the fire, Airbnb has a program, and we welcome people for free. for free in our home. Hotel don't do that. Thank you so much. Thank you to support us. Thank you.
Okay, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Peter Huang from Eagle Rock. Dear council members, thank you for your leadership and hearing our voices today. I'm a homeowner of a small triplex in Eagle Rock, and I've been living there with my family since 2016. Since then, we've invested heavily in and operated as a short-term rental. Over the last three years, we were able to provide accommodations for a very diverse amount of guests from both in and out of town. Many were families, some with babies and pets, couples, local folks needed a place to stay, and so forth. We've employed several contractors to maintain the property with a high level of quality and give them fair pay. Many repeat visitors from all around the world have said that they would much rather prefer our personal hospitality and experience of the real L.A. instead of just another shiny, high-priced hotel. Please help us keep the community growing and vibrant while continuing to bring revenues to Los Angeles. We greatly appreciate your support for Sadio's motion that will allow home sharing and RSO properties with one to four units. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If I could quickly get Beverly and Roger. Beverly and Roger, come forward. Beverly and Roger, we want to try to get everybody, so Beverly and Roger, please come forward. Yes.
Hi, my name is Beverly Miller, and I am a baby boomer, and I'm here as an advocate for the Senior Citizen Building in Pocorma, Monica. I'm speaking especially to you. We would like to have the doors fixed at the Senior Citizen, and we would also like to have the upgraded bathrooms, and also the open, the gate in front of the center. We would like to have those things done, and we're also concerned about the increased number of homeless people that, in our community, and we would like to see what you can do about it. If you can't help us to fix the doors, please point us in the direction where we can get some help to get the work done at the Senior Citizen that we're looking to have done. I have a letter here for you, which addresses the same. If somebody could give this to Monica, please, pass it to her.
Yeah, the one of the sergeants, if you get the letter.
Thank you. Thank you. Look forward to hearing from you soon.
Okay, Steve. Steve, Roger. Steve, Roger. And Linda, after him. Yes, identify yourself.
My name is Steve from Eagle Rock. The ordinance number 185931 to regulate home sharing requires input from hosts to balance everyone's needs. It's just not ready yet. I've been hosting with Airbnb almost one year, long enough to see the shortcomings. This ordinance is very anti-business. Several items are excessive and blatantly unfair to hosts needing to operate a home-sharing business. I've owned my home for 35 years and got into home-sharing because financial need. Being involved has saved me from foreclosure. Unfair items include the 120-day limit to make a living and an excessive $850 fee to earn beyond that. That limitation and the fee need to be eliminate, eliminated. It takes 11 days of rental for me to cover that $850. Let's work to make this right for all of us.
Thank you. So is Linda?
Hello, my name is Linda. Thank you for your time, and I have someone with me carrying some packets because it's too heavy for me. I'm not here to speak for myself today. I'm here to speak for 70 hosts of Airbnb that were unable to be here today, and they have made a statement on a three-by-five card that would be about one minute. So I'm here to give their statements to the council members, and I've made photocopies of each one and have them to, in a packet, to give to each councilman. And I then, this is the originals, that is for Bob Bloomingfield. And basically, I am a homeowner of a primary residence owner-occupied, and I am very concerned about the non-clarity of the law that's going forward. I feel that the city has made millions of dollars off of revenue, and until we have clarity how to go forward, I'm asking that possibly the deadline be postponed until there's more clarity from the city how we move forward with this.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, why don't we vote on item two right now? If we could vote on item two. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna do a couple of more public comment. We're gonna then go into our presentation. If I could get Melanie, Rhonda, and Marta. Please come forward. I'm gonna try to get everybody up. So identify yourself and go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Melanie August. My husband and I have been homeowners in Woodland Hills for over 27 years. We rented out a private room in our home for over three years. The 850 annual fee for extended home sharing is too high. My husband is permanently and totally disabled, and we rely on year-round rental income from Airbnb. Plus, if our application is declined, we don't get a refund. Being able to rent two bedrooms simultaneously would help to offset this fee every year. With only three weeks away from the 7-1 effective date, I'm not really clear on what the rules are, and it's very stressful. The registration process needs to be opened up for public input. There needs to be more dialogue about what the neighbor notification process is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Hayder, and my husband and I own a duplex in the Miracle Mile. I've been involved in this process for several years, and I witnessed the Plum Committee recommending that owner-occupied RSOs be allowed to Airbnb rooms in their own homes, and yet that is not in the ordinance. We're keeping a roof over our heads as this city gets harder and harder to survive in. Please, support Councilman Sadio's motion to allow Airbnb and owner-occupied RSO, because keeping me from renting a room in my own home does not add one square foot to the rent control housing stock.
Next speaker, followed by an Ed and a Susan. Hi, identify yourself.
Hello there. My name is Marta Cross, and I'm an actress. My husband is a jazz musician who bought his first home in Seattle. It was a lawn that he mowed since he was eight years old. That house allowed us to sell and buy in Highland Park in Los Angeles, which is our favorite city in the world. I'm an Army brat and traveled the world. He's a jazz musician, has traveled the world. We have a $5,000 mortgage. We need to make at least $2,500 to be able to survive on such a flexible income. I've been using my home as my duplex as a short-term rental for the last two years. I've been promoting local businesses and encouraging guests to explore our incredible neighborhood. We've had local neighbors celebrating adoptions and graduations and new births because their small, tiny homes in Highland Park can't house their families and guests, and regulations don't allow us to build on. Tourists like actors and dreaming musicians, we've given them our numbers and helped to encourage them and said, "Stay in touch with us when you move to Los Angeles." So we'd love to be able to be considered to rent our duplexes.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Ed Coleman, Venice. I am deeply concerned with the haphazard way the city is handling this last-minute launch of the home-sharing ordinance. With three weeks to the start date, we still don't know how to register, what types of accommodations will be allowed, what type of documentation will be required, or even how much it will cost us. There are still pending motions in the city council that may change this ordinance. There is a fee study underway that will affect the cost. How can you implement a law that isn't even finalized? What was promised to be fair and reasonable law that encouraged responsible home-sharing and eliminated the bad actors is the same rash of restrictive and punitive measures the Planning Department unveiled four years ago. It's as if you didn't hear a word from the many thousands of people this law adversely impacts. If you truly want to eliminate illegal hotels and absentee vacation rentals, this is not that law. With so many unanswered questions, you need to delay the launch of this ordinance until you work out the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And if I could get Derek and Guy real quick. Derek and Guy, please come. Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Susan. I do Airbnb. I rent a room in my house for $30 a day. It's usually full, but you're saying, oh, first of all, pay $850 to do that. That's one month's, it's 28 days of my income, which seems a little unfair. Also, I have registered as a business owner with a business license for, with the city of L.A. I am now required to report my earnings once a month, unlike any of the other things I've been registered for. And the big thing is, in three weeks, I'm in violation. And there is no way not to be in violation because you guys aren't set up to handle it. We're all gonna be violators of the law because the law is not out there. There is no place to register. There is no, and the fees are insane. Come on, guys, some of us, you know, really need that money to live, and we're living in our own homes.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm assuming you're Derek?
My name's Guy.
Guy, so is Derek not here? Okay, okay, Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been a homeowner here in Valley Glen for 24 years, and we're really good citizens. We're, I just don't under, we have a guest unit we rent out at our, at our home on Airbnb. It really contributes to the community. There's people that come from Airbnb, come to L.A., which, by the way, in California, California has the biggest tourism of any state in the union, dollars, dollar-wise. And we, people come here because, to Airbnb, they wouldn't come here otherwise because they couldn't afford to stay at a hotel. So there's a lot of people here spending money because of what we do. And I don't, I'm very unclear on how the regulations are gonna be in effect, when they take effect, for how long they take effect, and when we're supposed to pay what to where. And so, until that's cleared up, I would just ask that we please extend the July 1st. Make it go into effect at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Derek?
Derek Rath, Venice. It's obvious that the city is woefully unprepared to roll out the STR ordinance at this time. There is such a lack of detail that many of us don't even know whether we're eligible to sign up at all. We thought that after three years of discussion, the city was moving to a more nuanced legislation that protected good players and weeded out the bad. We have retreated to the sledgehammer proposals from the Planning Department that ignore all the ideas we thought were going to be incorporated. For example, the ability to host in garage conversions on your home property, providing they are habitable. It's disappeared. Can we be grandfathered? I've hosted for nine years, paid TOT since the start, have displaced no one, and played by the rules. It's unfair. If you really want the bad guys out, apartment buildings and unattended vacation rentals are where you should focus first, not last. The city will lose millions of tax dollars. Homeowners will lose homes. This ordinance needs a lot more thought and detail before it is ready. Don't rush it. Get it right.
Thank you. Okay, if we could keep it down. Okay, we're gonna, we're going to suspend public comment at this point. I'm gonna come right back to it, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield for a presentation.
I've got a few presentations today. I'm gonna start, though, with one, and Councilmember Corretts and I are gonna switch off. I'm gonna start with the CERT presentations, I can bring up all the folks with the CERT program.
Please come forward.
Fire Department captain. As you all probably know, this is National CERT Week. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about it, but, but a better way to tell you about it is through a video, and so let's see a little video to introduce what is CERT. If we could roll the video. Nice video. So CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team Program. It is an amazing program because it activates volunteers. It activates people in the community because we all know when disaster strikes, not if, but when. Our first responders will be there for, at some point, but we need to rely on each other. Those of you who know me know I've been very focused on emergency preparedness. I sort of, my, cut my teeth in politics in that sense. When the earthquake hit, I was working for Congressman Berman, and my life changed at that point, both getting the aid for this community, $14 billion, but then the next year and a half, working with people to work on the small business loans and FEMA and all the things that go into recovering from a disaster. So for me, the importance of being prepared is seared into my consciousness. But in order to really be prepared, we need to have people on the ground. And, and great ideas, we always say in this chamber, they start in L.A., they grow in California, and the winds blow from the west to the east. Well, this CERT program idea is a great example of that. The concept was developed and implemented by the L.A. Fire Department in 1985. The Whittier-Narys earthquake in '87 underscored the area-wide threat of major disasters. It confirmed the need to actually train civilians. And then, in 1993, after the program became successful here, that's when the training was start, started to be made available nationally by FEMA, and FEMA picked up on that. And now, as you saw in the video, there are CERT programs throughout this country. But again, remember, that great idea started right here in Los Angeles, and we're taking it to new levels. And we've seen it in action just recently with the Woolsey Fire. We had folks who were CERT-trained, who were there on the ground, helping out every day. So, there's a number of speakers here, so I don't want to speak too long. I want you to hear from some of the, the folks who can tell you about the program and tell you about what we're doing. I'm gonna start with Captain Cody Wire eater. Captain Cody has been a member of the L.A. Fire Department for the last 10 years. As a firefighter, he served the Los Angeles communities of downtown, South Los Angeles, Sunland Tahunga, Van Nuys, Woodland Hills, and most recently, Station Commander of Fire Station 46 located in the south L.A. area. With 10 years of LAFD, Captain Wire eater has been named the CERT Unit Commander in Charge of Training and Coordinating Volunteers, certified to be first responders. Captain, if you'd say a few words.
Hi, good morning. Thank you again, Councilmember, I appreciate it. Again, thank you for this opportunity to be able to really highlight the, our volunteers in the city of Los Angeles. The neat thing is, is that we've got roughly over 70,000 people we've trained since 1985, 1986 in CERT. Those are gonna be your neighbors. Those are those neighbors that respond in when we do have that major disaster. One unique, unique program that we do have with is our LAFD Call Out Team. And what that LAFD Call Out Team does is they're integrated, integrate with the LAFD, and they really are that logistical crush for us. And so, when that high-hazard day comes in of a red flag conditions, your CERT members, who are also your community members, your, your neighbors, are driving a fire department apparatus for that quick response. If we do have a brush fire, we're able to identify those, that smoke and be able to get that quick response. During the Woolsey Fire, obviously, we had a lot of issues on our hands, but during that time, we had red flag conditions in the city of Los Angeles. Members that are the selfless commitment and dedication that they show, such as John Gilbert, who unfortunately couldn't be here today because of his son's graduation, who was going to miss it because of the commitment level he has, but Emmy Award film editor who designed the video for us, and then Kevin Sprout here. Kevin Sprout is one of our Battalion 17 coordinators in the West Valley. Kevin was evacuated, came back after his family was safe, and for several days, worked on our community fire patrols, ensuring that we didn't have anything break up the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you to Kevin. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity to really highlight the, the work our, our members are doing out there every day. They take their time to go to neighborhood councils to promote CERT. If it wasn't for, for their support, our program would probably have been gone a long time ago. So, very nice to have that. So thank you again for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just give them a round of applause. You know, Bob, and just to jump in, because I feel compelled to, I don't think we can thank you guys enough for everything that you do. The volunteers are unbelievable. I was so impressed with your program that I made my entire, my entire office is CERT, certified. We all took classes and invited the public as well. Thank you for your Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your service and for all that you do.
You know, and you mentioned, you mentioned the classes. Anyone can take those classes. We are offering them this week, this summer in my office. We have a course going with Fire Department, a course training in July through August. It's once a week. You show up at my district office, you sign up in advance, of course, and you get the training. So I encourage anyone to do that. Now, speaking of people who are trained, who are citizen volunteers, I want to introduce two folks here, Nathan Wolfstein and Jamie Pellegrini. They have developed a viable working model for whole-community emergency and disaster management, response and relief. They are currently confirming an MOA with the Los Angeles Emergency Department with LA EMD to enhance and expand the Be More Prepared model throughout the city of Los Angeles. And I should also say, they, they are, they are the engine of my, what I call my Bobcat team. I have these community action teams, and they are the emergency preparedness Bobcat team, and a lot of the stuff they talked about is, has filtered out of that. They started with me in the Assembly, when I called it the V-Prep Task Force, basically getting community folks together to think about how we can be more prepared, and they have taken it to an amazing level and, and are now working this model with EMD, and I want to bring them up to say a few words about it. Nathan, Jamie, come on up.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, guys, welcome.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here again. Our last time here, thanks to Councilmember Blumenfield, was six and a half years ago when he was installed as a new council member here in Los Angeles and made us the Chair of his Bobcat Community Action Team for Emergency and Disaster Preparedness. So what we really wanted to say today is that because of that, six and a half years later, we are now ready to take our model and move throughout the city of Los Angeles through all four bureaus. We're very strong in Valley operations. Our newest VPod, Volunteer Emergency Point of Distribution, which is a pre-positioned supply cache for Phase 1, first 72 hours disaster response, is now going in the joint area between Councilmembers Martinez and Rodriguez at the United Methodist Church. So that was where we started years ago, and we're moving out. We have 11 such VPods at this point. We have a warehouse in CD 12 and a major warehouse in CD 3. So our whole goal is to make sure that when it's time to respond, that we're there. Jamie handles all of our donations management, so say a quick word.
Thank you for letting me speak. What we do is we pre-position containers, we pre-position, so when we, we're activated for the Woolsey fire through Councilman Bob Blumenfield, we helped all the evac centers right away. They didn't have food and water, so we supplied that to, all through Woodland Hills, through Pepperdine, through Pacific Palisades, which helped many thousands of people. Thanks to Bob Blumenfield, he started the donation for the last couple of days before the, I know when the Woolsey fire started, and we got several truckloads of, of supplies which went out for relief. So it, it really helps, you know, us to, to be a part of the city and be part of the Emergency Management Department. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jamie. And, and I mean, you're being very modest about, about what happened in the Woolsey fire. I mean, when these guys sprang into action and we, we were able to get donations to all, you know, fill up all of the Red Cross sites within an hour, they had supplies. And then literally donations started pouring in from the community and figuring out the logistics of all of that, when we had thousands of pounds of, of stuff coming in and out and going and getting it organized to all the different shelters was, was incredible to be part of, and, and thank you guys for that. It was, it was a great proof of concept and, and just testament to the great work that you do. Thank you. Next, I want to introduce Rusi Mobery. Now Rusi is also a member of, of the Bobcat team, but he is a leading organizer, trainer, and implementer, and mentor for amateur ham radio operations in the city of Los Angeles. I don't know if you know this about ham, I'm actually a ham radio operator. I got my license when I was nine. I, a lot of you speak different languages. I do speak Morse code, it's true. Da-da-da, 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 da-da-da. That's my, my moniker. But he and Los Angeles EMCom work together for amateur radio. You know, little things you learn about people. I haven't done it in a while. Break or break it, that's different. That's CB radio. The holds, it's way different, way different. Ham radio, okay. He'll tell you about this. He and the LA EMCom group work in amateur radio services areas, the operators in over 78 area hospitals through multiple communication channels and the Volunteer Emergency Communications or the VCOM mobile trailer. Rusi.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for having me. I'm gonna talk a little bit about amateur radio. My name is Rusi Mobery. I represent Los Angeles Emergency Communications Group and Areas, Los Angeles, but I represent all ham radio operators. We have ham radio operators that support the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and 70-plus area hospitals, as well as the Highway Patrol. In every major disaster throughout our nation, ham radio operators come to the rescue. The first thing to become overloaded after a major emergency disaster are communications. Our cellphones may or may not work. Our landlines may or may not work, but most likely, most likely they won't work. Ham radio operators are trained, and we do deploy in an emergency to our supported agencies, whether it's the Fire Department, hospitals, police departments. It's very important that people become ham radio members, like the council member here. We offer training throughout the year. We work with Be More Prepared, we work with the city, we work with the county. We're always training and preparing for emergency communications. As the council member said, we're not CB radio operators. We are licensed by the FCC, we train, and we have different classes of licenses. So please recognize that ham radio is important, and please do get trained. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rusi. And finally, I want to introduce the Salvation Army San Fernando Valley Corps, Captains Juan and Nancy Argumendo. They are instrumental in bringing the whole community preparedness to over 46 ZIP codes in their core demographic, which is primarily Spanish-speaking communities. Though the Salvation Army San Fernando Valley Corps, through their council, they are directly involved with all the programs and services currently offered and those in development. Anybody familiar with the work they do, you've gotta be impressed. They're pretty amazing, so. Juan.
Members of the council, thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Captain Juan Argumendo. It is my second year here in California. I love the traffic, believe me. And as a Salvation Army, you know, through the Emergency Disaster Service, we open our place in Van Nuys, we are located over here, and Victory and Kester, we operate all sides, you know, for the huge effort, you know, for the community, to help the people in need. So thank you so much for, Nathan, and my friends, you know, I've been proud to be a part of this team, and we continue, you know, to support people in need, you know, especially in the emergency disaster for those people that don't speak English. And thank you so much for letting me speak, you know. God bless.
Thank you. All right, and then as appreciation for, for all of them, I want to give them each certificate. Be More Prepared, you guys. Here, Jamie. Rusi for Communications. Salvation Army. And then the big one, which is a recognition of CERT Week. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Okay, Bob, before you leave, I'd like to recognize a couple of folk. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. I want to correct one little thing that you said. This program actually began right after Los Angeles hosted the first international earthquake conference in 1982, in which Councilman Burnson hosted the international community, and it was discussions with the Tokyo, Japan people that we came up with the idea for CERT and got it into the budget. So it began with that, but what really was amazing is in 1990, about 1990, we had a mass casualty drill with LA Fire, LAPD, every department of the city, even though EMD did not exist at that point, every department of the city participated. We had about 30 fire engines there, I think. That's about 10% of our, our deployment. We had 200 police officers, 400 CERT people, and they did a live-action disaster drill at Universal Studios back lot, where we had collapsed buildings, people were trapped underneath buildings, and it was real-life drill for what turned out in 1994 to be the real thing. That drill prepared us so well, and I wish we'd get back to doing those some of the guys in the Fire Department. You might want to go back and take a look at that, because it trained our CERT people in real-life situation, and we were really ready in 1994. With people like Salvation Army and others that came forward, we are, we were said to be, at 1994, by FEMA, as the most prepared city in America. And I'm very proud of what we've done, and I'm proud of what you guys continue to do. Bob, thank you for keeping it alive. I'm proud of Hal Burnson and having worked for him. But we are the best-prepared city in America, and I just want to reiterate that 1994 was not the last big earthquake we are going to have, and the next one is coming sooner rather than later. So what you're doing will continue to be critical to the future safety of our city, and thank you for what you do, and let's kick it up another notch. Thanks.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for bringing in this presentation. I know Mr. Smith and, and your predecessor also had your entire staff, along with Mr. Wesson. My staff as well has been CERT certified, especially after the Latuna and Creek fires. We recognize the, the value of making sure that we were all prepared, because we recognize that, you know, as Councilmember Smith mentioned, after the North Ridge earthquake, how important it is for us to be that critical triage in our neighborhoods, because we are going to have fire and police services stretched very, you know, very thin. So that's really important, but I also wanted to communicate to the rest of the members of the community that might be watching, recently, it was in fact last year that we launched our first Armenian CERT program, where I paid to have the, the same documentation all translated for the members of our Armenian community. I know it's available in multiple languages, in Spanish as well, because we need everyone to understand. You know, it doesn't, there are no language barriers in an emergency situation, and it is very important that all members of our community feel that this is available for them to participate in, so that they can be part of the neighborhood solutions that we are going to require in the event of those large-scale emergencies. So thank you very much for your work. We look forward to having more members of the community participate in the CERT program. I know it's a minimum of 20 coming together to make the commitment, and I think that's a really strong, good number for folks to come together and participate in what is really a remarkable program that we are, that we are so fortunate to have available here in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you all very much for your work.
Again, congratulations and thank you so much, Mr. Blumenfield. Thank you guys for your service. Okay, and before I call Mr. Coretts, I'm calling Danny, James, and Robbie. Please come forward. Danny, James, and Robbie. Guys, don't hesitate. You don't have to be in order, just come on. I'm trying to get everybody cooperate with me. All right, identify yourself.
My name is Danny. Thank you for having, thank you for having us today. I'm a, I'm an Airbnb host. I've been an Airbnb host for two years now. Airbnb has been a very positive thing for us. I think what we're all saying here today is we'd like to continue to advance while negotiating, and as politicians, I'm sure you all know what we're, what we're talking about. It's a, it's a beautiful thing for hosts, it's a beautiful thing for guests, it's a beautiful thing for the city. It's a positive thing, it's been very positive for me because it's opened up what I do and allowed me to, to, to do more service to people. So the common theme today here is to let, please allow us to advance while negotiating, while everything is coming together and taking place. It's a big, kind of unwieldy machine, but please, please allow us to advance while the negotiations take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so looking for James, Robbie, and Joanne. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Hi, I'm James, and I'm a responsible owner of two Airbnbs. They're five-bedroom houses that allow, they allow a family to get together with a kitchen and a, and a, and a living room, that they won't get that experience with a house, with a hotel. And I suggest that the irresponsible owners of, like, party houses get cited and fined after several times, and they, and that'll, and they don't penalize responsible owners like ourselves. I think that should be set up. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne? How's spirit in the crew? I hope that all is well.
They're all well. Hardly waiting to get out of school at 12:30 today, because it's the last day. My name is Joanne Yovanikarb. I'm with West Hills Neighborhood Council. And as I was coming from the parking lot on Friar, I walked across the street, and the street had so much garbage on it. It was, you know, it, it wasn't that bad, but, you know, it wasn't piled up, but there was cups and soda bottles, and I thought, how can we help this situation? And then it dawned on me, we have a lot of kids in the summer who would love to have a summer job, and the city could put them to work sweeping the sidewalks where it's not contagious or trash piled up, and each one of you city council members could actually hire a team of kids to go out and sweep. That's my idea, okay? I am CERT-trained. I did have to use it at a restaurant and do CPR.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have Debbie? Debbie, come forward, and I called Robbie, I don't know if he came, but if I could get Debbie and Patrick Baca. Come on. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
I'm Debbie Pollak. I want to say that you all have inspired me into community activism. You've inspired me to fight for seniors and disabled people who are to be allowed to rent two bedrooms in their homes, in their empty nests, now that they have to rent rooms so that they can keep their homes, like myself. You've inspired me to find leaders, leaders that will value $100 million in transient occupancy taxes. A portion of that was supposed to go to affordable housing, and given the recent LA homelessness report limiting this tax, this STR ordinance seems like a pretty big oops for our city council. I'm a proud six-year Airbnb host with over 500 five-star reviews, a 32-year Sherman Oaks resident, and I'm pretty much disgusted by the completely unfair ordinance to homeowner hosts. Please let us know. Thanks, you guys. We want to be able to do what we want, to stay in our houses. I have two bedrooms that belong to my children. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's Patrick.
Hello, I'm Mary Kay Denny. I am an Airbnb owner of a one-bedroom that is attached to my house. I've been doing this for six years. I've spoken at so many council meetings, I couldn't count them on my fingers. And what I am concerned about is the levy that you're trying to attach, starting July 1st, of 800 a month for just being able to go over 120 days. I would think the council people would recognize that we are not doing this just for fun and games. We are here because we had jobs. I had, as a stock photographer, I'm a teacher, and I need this as extra income. To charge $800 more on over 120 days is outrageous. I am asking you to reconsider this amount, because it is totally unfair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is Patrick here? And please, folks, I have your names. Wait till I call your name. Yes.
I'm Patrick Baca, homeowner in Sherman Oaks, and I am a host on Airbnb. I understand that the city ordinance regarding short-term rentals is to start in July, but we, the hosts, have had zero city updates. I own my home for the past 20 years, and Airbnb helps me pay my mortgage and maintain my property. The proposed city fees that I have heard about are excessive. Usually, when I give someone money, I get something in return. If you expect me to hand over nearly $1,000, I'd like to know what the city plans to give me for my money. So far, it's been very confusing, with little clarity on the city's end.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off for another few minutes on the public comment, and now I'm gonna recognize Mr. Paul Coretts.
As you know, I've been focused on overall ecosystem health for a number of years. Los Angeles is situated in one of only 35 biodiversity hotspots in the world, and that includes our ocean. We're on the southern edge of habitat for the same southern resident orcas that live in the Puget Sound area in Washington State. So in other words, what happens to their orca population happens to our orca population. In their native ocean habitat, these orcas are like our famous Hollywood mountain lion, P-22. When you have an apex predator present, you can fairly assume that you have a relatively healthy ecosystem all the way down the food chain. I've been so pleased about the response from Angelenos to P-22 and hope that we can keep on protecting him for many years to come. However, the southern resident orca population has dropped to just 75, the lowest number in over 30 years, so protecting them is reaching a critical point. With me today are representatives from the Lummi Nation, an indigenous tribe from Puget Sound, from the Puget Sound area. For the past five years, the House of Tears Carvers of the Lummi Nation have traveled across North America with a 3,000-pound-plus totem pole to bring attention to the proposed fossil fuel terminals, oil trains, coal trains, and oil pipelines and the threats that they pose to tribes and local communities. This year, as part of their Salish Sea campaign, the Lummi Nation tribal members have traveled to the Miami Seaquarium to call for the release of a whale that was taken from the Salish Sea 47 years ago. Tokatay the Orca, along with about a third of the orca population, was taken from Puget Sound and sent to theme parks all over the world in the 60s and 70s. The critically endangered Pacific Northwest orca population has never recovered from that loss of so many of its apex predators, which is why the ecosystem is struggling. I'm honored to introduce to you today Fred Lane, a council member from the Lummi Nation, who will detail the spiritual importance of the journey of the totem pole and the importance of the people who live under the water, the endangered orcas of the Pacific Northwest.
Si Amanestalacha. Sohila Quinison Atachu Tiakaya. Si Amanestalacha. Suketab, Suketab Sanasnat. Thank you, distinguished members of the great City of Angels, the Los Angeles City Council. My Indian name is Suketab. My Christian name is Frederick Lane. I'm from the Lummi Nation. I'm the freshman council member, so you, on the Lummi Nation Council. So like many of you, you too can believe, as a politician, you could believe half of what I say is gonna be true. We come here in peace. We honor the presence and we honor our relatives here from the Tataviam Nation. We honor the great people and we raise our hands to each and every one of you, from the youngest to the oldest, the great people here of Los Angeles. We want to thank all the speakers that spoke before us and their concerns as this again is our constitutional right as American citizens. We come here to honor our relative, the Kwahomacston, the people that live under the water. And as many of you know that we as members of the human family are related to the four-legged, to the ones that fly the sky, to the insects, we coexist with one another. And it is our, our responsibility to come here to speak for those who can't speak for themselves, which in our, our language, again, is the Kwahomacston, the people that live under the water and how endangered their world is becoming. You may remember about a year ago, a mother gave birth to her calf and she carried her little calf, her name was Telequa, and she carried her calf for 20 days in over 1,000 miles, showing the world that their world is in danger, that the salmon are dying off, that the fossil fuels and the destruction of their world is coming to an end. And so with our words from Chief Salif, the hereditary chief of the Lummi Nation, sent us to bring our totem pole back home, which we brought down to the Miami Seaquarium a year ago. And our relative, our Kwahomacston relative, you may know her at the Miami Seaquarium as Lolita, is her stage name. They called her Tokatay when she was stolen from the Salish Sea in 1972. And so we gave her the Indian name, Skwali Chaktanat. Skwali Chaktanat is her Indian name now. And so spiritually, we travel through the City of Angels here to bring awareness of what Councilman, Councilman Coretts is bringing before you, of protecting our ocean, protecting the sacred waters of the Los Angeles River. As we all know, as the human family, that we cannot exist without air, we can't exist without fire, we cannot exist without clean earth, and of course, we cannot exist without that beautiful land. We all understand that global climate change is happening. We all understand that these are issues that are not only being brought attention to the rights of nature. Nature is showing us what is happening to our worlds and so it's up to us as the human family, it's up to us as politicians, it is up to us as people to stand up for what we know is right because we have corporations writing laws for that, for our people. We are having corporations that are standing in on behalf of our politicians and we think that it's important that we stand up and we have representatives standing up for the great people of America. This land is our land. This land is your land. We are all standing here together as a human family. And again, we thank you, we applaud you, your efforts, council member. And again, thank you for just this breath of time to stand before you in a humble and a good way to share our message that what, if we do not stand up for the rights of nature, nature and Mother Earth is gonna stand up for herself. Thank you. Right now, we'd like Uncle Sidki Kadum, Doug James, he's our elder. There's just two of us Lummi's traveling with the totem pole. ACN.
Well, I see, I'm Nestalacha, see, I'm Sidki Kadum Sanasnat. My Christian name is Douglas James. Honored to come before you and speak a few words just a breath of time that we come here together, just reaching out on behalf of those that don't have a voice. This little whale that's been down in the aquarium, went on 49 years, has the right to spend her last days in her traditional waters for which she come. Her mother's still alive, in her 80s. Her grandmother just passed at 104. So they, they do have a voice, they do cry out, "Help us." As Telequa was saying to the world, "Our babies are dying." It's time for us to stand up and unite with one heart and one mind. We had a song that came to us from a whale that laid down her life upon our beaches and as she was dying, a song came with one heart and one mind. So we need to stand united. I just want to reach out to all of you with that in mind, you know. It's up to us if we're gonna give anything to our children. We gotta do it now before it's too late. We can't stop it, but maybe we can slow it down.
And also, if I could have tribal president from the Tataviam Nation just to share a few words, Rudy Ortega. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. And it is an honor to stand here with my cousin Julia Bargani, who's also Gabalino Tongva, in my tribe, Fernandini Tataviam, which is from San Fernando Mission. And it's an honor to welcome the Lummi people who are relatives to us, not only from up north, but even they have relatives here in 29 Palms. And it's an honor to always welcome our native brothers and sisters to this land to bring that voice. And we'd like to continue working with all the council members that we know and advocate for the river, the natural areas, and also just to bring truth about the first peoples of Los Angeles. And so again, we'd like to thank all council members who allow the Lummi Nation, Councilmember Coretts, to give this opportunity. And I welcome all of you to come outside to see what they're talking about that's sitting right behind Van Nuys City Hall. Thank you.
And it wouldn't be proper as a freshman council member on the Lummi Nation Council, on July 24th through July 28th, the Lummi Nation is welcoming each and every one of you, including all your families, including all our friends that stand behind us, including all those that are speaking out here to the Paddle to Lummi 2019, July 24th through the 28th. We welcome you on behalf of our veterans, our elders, our youth. Our totem pole, which is sitting outside, will be presented to the San Juan Islands where we hope that our relative retires, Lolita Tokatay. But you are welcome to the Paddle to Lummi 2019, July 24th through the 28th. Bring your families, bring your campers. We provide all the food, we provide all the entertainment. There will be more than 100 canoes coming ashore from different tribes throughout the world. We have guests coming from Papua New Guinea, we have guests coming from New Zealand, our relatives from Hawaii, and throughout the Northwest, including Alaska and British Columbia. And again, you, you're welcome. And if you come and you just say, Freddie Lane invited me to the Paddle to Lummi, they will point you towards me. And you come and you could look it up at paddle to lummi, L-U-M-M-I dot O-R-G. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Coretts, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to, thank you, Mr. Coretts, for this presentation. And my name is Mitch O'Farrell. I'm a tribal member of the Wyandotte Nation and it's an honor to have all of you here. Thank you for what you're doing. Whales do not belong in captivity, they never have. I am so glad that we acknowledged Julia and Rudy. Thank you so much. We are on Tongva land. I've long felt that our sea mammals are much more highly involved, evolved than all of us because they once walked the earth and decided to go back. And so I understand the, the value of recognizing our sea mammals as brothers and sisters and human spirits because I think we have a lot to learn from them. So what you're doing is admirable, it's spiritual, it's righteous, and I just want to help welcome you here as a Los Angeles City Council member. Thank you so much and Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Colleagues, I'm introducing a motion to oppose any attempts to weaken the Endangered Species Act from an ocean protection point of view in honor of the efforts undertaken by the Lummi Nation. And we thank them for their presence here today and I'd like to present them with a certificate to recognize their work, them for their work on behalf of the orcas.
Okay, thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. If I could get Heather Carson and Brianna Johnson and then we're gonna go to Mr. Bob Blumenfield. So Heather, if you're here, Heather Carson, Brianna Johnson, are you here? Wave your hand. Okay. Come on up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Brenna Johnson and I have run Airbnb for four years now. I was a homeschool mom. I homeschool my kids, they're empty nesters now. And we've been running two units out of our home and these new fees and new laws frankly are disturbing. We feel like ambassadors for Sherman Oaks area. Our guests come, we put them into different restaurants and businesses around, and these new fees and new laws will really threaten that and help us to pay our mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you. So Heather, Heather Carson, Mark? Mark, come on down, Mark. Morning.
The city of Los Angeles is receiving, thanks to VRBO and Airbnb, since Airbnb is not the only game in town, an estimated $1 to $1,400 million in STR lodging taxes annually. That does not include taxes paid by the millions of visitors and tourists who stay at these STRs. Although they may claim STRs are illegal, they receive it, the city of LA receives it and applies that to their annual budget. By moving forward, forward with this ordinance, you will forfeit millions, if not billions of dollars, in revenue annually. How do you plan to explain to the voters of Los Angeles how you, how you let hundreds of millions in revenue slip through your fingers? Measure EE was recently defeated and you're wondering why. Know that the STRs are supported by the majority of voters. Although there is an estimated 6,000, 10,000 active STRs in Los Angeles, it is still not filling the huge demand. Do not expect support from the voters. You cannot have it both ways.
Mr. Blumenfield.
For the Lipkowski Project, everybody associated with Lipkowski, come on up. No, I know, we're doing the inspiration one. The third one. Yes, sorry. So, come on up. So colleagues, we're here today, we're going to honor and talk about the David Lipkowski Project and the people who put on this incredible exhibit. And you can see a little bit of it here today is in, is in the area right over here and the full exhibit will be on display this fall in the City Hall Rotunda. So what is this David Lipkowski Project? And they're gonna tell you about the details, but I'll give you just an overview. The mission of the project is to educate through the art of David Lipkowski. By engaging viewers with his painting and sketches, the David Lipkowski Project shares lessons of life, survival, tolerance, acceptance, and the importance of bearing witness to history. David Lipkowski documented Jewish life in particular, right before the Holocaust and during the Holocaust and, and really where what was called the, the Center for Jewish Life, which was in Lithuania. And bringing this artwork back to life has really been an interesting experience for them and I went with them to Lithuania several months ago on this, to open this art exhibit in Lithuania with this amazing twist to it, where we had students from Los Angeles and students from Lithuania got together to bring this, to breathe life into this art and they attached music to it and they did a number of things to really illustrate what life was like and to give it a modern twist. It's a part of life that has been in some ways lost but is hiding in plain sight. When we walked around through Lithuania, you saw there used to be hundreds and hundreds of temples and now there's really only one, but you could see the vestiges of what was there. You're on a signpost or a street. And in fact, David Lipkowski is Leora's uncle and we were able to go to his house that he, that her uncle had lived in when he painted some of these things before, of course, it was confiscated and family was murdered, as happened to 90% of the Jewish population in Lithuania. But with me today, there's been some amazing people who brought this together. I want to mention them all and then, and bring a couple of them up. So we have Stephanie Wilson, who's the Director of Education. We've got Lisa Laner Fagan, Connie Marco, and the Executive Director, Leora Reiken. Stephanie, you might remember because she was my honoree for the Deborah. for the Deborah event. So why don't I, I'm gonna let you guys explain. Who wants to speak first? All right. Leora, if you would come up and say a few words. And appreciate all that you've done to bring this to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, good morning. I'm Leora Reiken, founder of the David Lipkowski Project. Thank you for having myself, Stephanie Wilson, Barbara and Abby Barishman, and Karen Perlmutter, and Laura Cohen from the David Lipkowski Project here today. Art is a powerful tool to break down barriers, begin difficult conversations, and to begin the learning process. More than ever, there is an urgent need for discussions and conversations about bigotry, hatred, and antisemitism. The over 500 images painted by my great uncle, David Lipkowski, some of which are on exhibit today, painted more than half a century ago, are today more relevant than ever before. My great uncle, David Lipkowski, grew up in Vilna, Lithuania. Vilna was sometimes part of Poland, sometimes part of Russia, sometimes part of Germany. But Vilna was the epicenter of the Jewish world. More than a third of the population was Jewish, with hundreds of synagogues and learning institutions. David Lipkowski was one of those people, born with a paintbrush in his hand, always wanting to paint and draw and document his city. Sent to Siberia for so-called anti-Soviet activity, he survived his time during the war in a Siberian prison camp. How did he survive? He actually became the prison tattoo artist, gaining an extra piece of bread, an extra piece of potato peel. When him and my Aunt Rifka returned to Vilna at the end of the war, they were confronted with devastation, destruction, and the murder of the Jewish community. 95%, including my great-grandparents, who you see in this picture today, taken to the forests of Purnar, where they were stripped of their clothing and shot into mass pits. David Lipkowski documented not only how Jews died during the Holocaust, but also how they lived. My greatest concern, when I started the David Lipkowski Project nearly four years ago, was not the over 500 pieces of art that had been scattered across the world that we would need to document and catalog. My greatest concern is what happened if I shared this story and I shared this art and people felt absolutely nothing. How would I feel that the death of 6 million Jews and millions of others was actually just not that relevant? In 2016, we developed an educational program that uses the over 500 pieces of art done by David Lipkowski to educate and engage students. We use the art, we use history, and students at public, private, and private schools and colleges become educators and curators to their community. As an educational organization, we are constantly aware of the need to adapt to the changing needs and demands of today's audiences. And so we have taken our educational program a step further and developed a virtual reality component where you are actually able to step into the artwork and you'll be able to experience that at City Hall in September. Like Lipkowski documented history through art, we at the David Lipkowski Project are making his memories meaningful and impactful. We are telling the millions of souls that died that they are not forgotten. Lipkowski's art, as you will see on exhibit today, allows us to remember the humanity behind the statistics. The past year has seen a significant rise in the number of antisemitic incidences. I believe our program, which provides real learning through a project-based approach and transference of ownership and responsibility for educating about the Holocaust, provides an antidote to antisemitism and an inoculation against bigotry. There is no excuse for not knowing what a swastika represents. It is our goal, it is our obligation, to use these images to spark discussions that build bridges and teach the importance of bearing witness to this very painful era affecting all of humanity. The unique nature of the David Lipkowski Project that fuses art with history, writing, and technology allows for the transfer of ownership and responsibility. We all have a responsibility to not only remember the Holocaust, but to share programs such as the David Lipkowski Project in schools and with organizations to ensure that this story, the story of man's inhumanity to man, is taught in a meaningful and impactful manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Leora. And next, I want to bring up Stephanie Wilson, who is the Director of Education.
Hi, I'll just add to what Leora said, that this exhibit has been curated by the students at Daniel Pearl Magnet High School under the leadership of Principal Deb Smith and Teacher Frankie Ortega. And the brochure that we have with us that's on the table was created by student curators at CSUN Hillel 818. And last, I will close with a quote from a student at the Multicultural Learning Center, Jordan. When she was in the eighth grade, she said, "I never knew that I would care so much" after participating in the program. So thank you for hosting the exhibit today and on September 18th at City Hall downtown.
And we really appreciate you both helping people care so much by documenting this important work. And so we've got a certificate for each of you and then a certificate, which I can hold here, for the David Lipkowski Project. So let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Let's go ahead and take Madam Clerk, so back to public comment. Do we have Eric Previn? Are you still here, Mr. Previn? You filled out cards on Items 1A and 6 and General Public Comment, followed by Candido and Sean Murphy.
And Madam President, as the Speaker makes his way forward, an amending motion for Item 6 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And I must say, I have some questions about the protocol of running presentations and a big, large group of people who want to give public comment.
So, Mr. Previn, would you stick to Items 1 and 6, please? No, no, that's what you signed up for. Please stick to 1 and 6.
Okay, that's fine. But I'm just giving you my two cents on that. It's frustrating, okay, for people. Now, yeah, certainly Item Number 1 is your annual or your daily lien, and there's nothing much interesting there. But the one that is interesting to me is the Fiscal Status Report, which, as you know, you amended in committee, so is ripe for comment. Unless you disagree with the Brown Act.
So, Mr. Previn, Item 2 was taken in committee. It was already voted on. You've signed up for Items 1 and 6.
Amendments like they want to do bookbinding for 50 grand.
Mr. Previn, get back on the agenda item. I'm gonna ask you to sit down, or you want to move on to General Public Comment? What do you want to do?
No, I'd like to speak on the items that are on the agenda.
Stay on the items, please.
Yeah, well, that's what I was trying to do. So you want me to just go to General Public Comment? It's completely, okay. I'll speak on the scooter item, okay? You've got AB, I think it's 1,112 by Friedman, which is a bill to make it so that short-term, I mean, the scooters are regulated at a state level. You would like to retain control at the local level because you're so good at regulating things like Airbnb. And the problem is, is that you're not. And we're worried that this is just going to result in more head-scratching confusion. We already have a pilot program that's going on. Not to be confused with the pilot program at Gelson's where Coetz and I are gonna be working on to rethink about idling ordinance like the New York law, where they're going after people for $350 if they're idling their vehicles. Of course, we all agree with the green component of that. But the idea that we're gonna turn run-of-the-mill residents into $75 snitches who get paid out of the citation is a complete misunderstanding of what the people really want. We want to be smart and cool and not idle our vehicles unnecessarily. But we have elderly people who sit in Gelson's and have to wait for their husband. So we can't go around doing it.
Go ahead and move on to General Public Comment.
Yeah. The General Public Comment is, you know, the City Hall, and not just City Hall. You don't need to walk more than a half a block. I thought a woman in public comment had a very good suggestion, which was to have the council district offices engage young people to do some cleanup. That's a great idea, and I completely support that. That's a great area. But we also have to do the basic due diligence. We found, you know, obviously, after we pulled out the reports that were being hidden at City Hall, that we do need facilities, okay? We can't be a world-class city, hashtag NBC Universal, the Olympics, without a mobile pit stop. Now, I'm disappointed that Corcoran's not here today because I know he's been fighting. But we need the council to support him, and Bonin has to support him, so that the mayor can feel comfortable sticking one public toilet at the Universal Red Line Station. How are we gonna put up permanent supportive housing all over the town if we can't stick one bathroom at a very public place where people will use it? Not just homeless folks, but folks, folks who come to visit. It's inhumane, and it's unhygienic, and enough is enough. And you can stick one in the mall at City Hall as well, so we don't have rats. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is... Candido?
Public Comment.
Is it myself or the lady? She's already up there, ma'am.
No, I don't have her name.
I was in the bathroom when you called me before. Public Comment. Heather?
This is General Public. I'm calling Items that people actually filled out cards for. Are you speaking on Items Number 1 or 6?
I signed in on the kiosk.
Yeah, but are you speaking on Item Number 1 or 6? Okay. I'm gonna call you back as soon as we do General Public Comment. Candido?
Are we also doing General Public Comment?
You are, because you also filled out cards for Item Number 1. So you've got Item Number 1 and General Public Comment.
Thank you very much. Candido, Mayor's proud resident of the 12th District. I want to, once again, thank Mr. Greg Smith for his service to our great city. Thank you for not only serving the city, but for the kids. People here don't realize what you do for the children in our district, and I thank you for that, along with the PALS program. I hope that John Lee will then continue that. God willing, the creek don't rise, but we'll continue with the great leadership that we need there.
Can we get back on to the agenda item?
And also, listen, this is General Public Comment. You know, you interfere so much. Why don't you let me do General Public Comment, and then we'll go back. I support A, R, and B, all these people here. But I want to also thank the DWP workers who are implementing the Hype Program. If you take part in that, you're gonna save yourself a lot of money. Please, if you want to talk to your constituent, let them know DWP has a Hype Program, Home Energy Improvement Program that really benefits residents. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Do you want to speak on Item 1 now?
Candido, you want your General Public Comment?
He's already...
You already taken it?
I'll pass and allow my time for these great people.
Thank you. Thank you, Candido. Next speaker is Sean Murphy. Hi, Sean. Sean, you're speaking on 1A and General Public Comment.
Yes, Item 1A, I'm supporting. General Public Comment. I want to let my fans know I'll be moving to Canoga Park. Yes, I'm sorry. My new councilman would be Bob Bloomingfield in 24 days from now. The reason I'm moving to Canoga Park, the reason I'm moving to Canoga Park, these hungry damn bastards landlords, they want money, 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 money. That's all they care about. They don't care about the poor. Your management doesn't care about the poor at all. F them.
Thank you, Sean. All right, members, just go ahead and vote on Item Number 1A. That concludes, I understand, hold on for just a second. That concludes, speakers, on any of the cards. Ms. Rodriguez, you want to speak on Item 1A?
Maybe, thank you. Yes, Madam President, I'd like to move that we receive and file the lien and reduce, I'm sorry, reduce the amount of the lien to zero and receive and file the subject lien due to the owner occupancy of the property.
Very well, without objection, that item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. The other item before us is Item Number 6. Is there a Donna Garcetti here to speak on Item Number 6? Donna Perlman. Come on up, Donna. Donna, you're speaking only on Item Number 6, correct?
And Public Comment.
You didn't fill your card out for that.
I said also under Donna.
Okay, but I don't have you down for General Public Comment, but I'll put you in. You've got two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, 'cause I put it under Donna. Okay, should I speak on 6 first? And we need smart restrictions on the short mobility. We not make sure that the people who are not disabled are taking it away and driving it away and stealing the scooters in the stores. We don't need to make it harder for the disabled, though, to use the needed scooters. We can't sit there and go, well, you've been here for so long, you have to give me your scooter. So while they're waiting for somebody. And we need, they can take it over to their cars and put the stuff in. So if you're talking about smart restrictions and trying to take it away so the people who are not disabled are taking the scooters away and stealing it, the homeless are stealing the scooters and taking them away, we just had one in Walmart, then yes. But to make sure that it is not taken by making harder restrictions for the disabled who can't walk and need those scooters. Okay, I'm gonna go on Public Comment.
You want your one minute of General Public Comment, Donna?
Okay. I need to tell the people here, the city councils, we need to open up video conferencing. You can come every Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So tell them that. Thank you for voting down EE for Borga Garcetti on fair taxation. And I'm not going downtown to do the rampant diseases to too many homeless, no sanitation. Anyway, I want to speak about the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council doing electioneering, new people running and coming up with cheat sheets, don't know how to vote, just say, well, here is listed, you just vote for this. Just one vote for... Anyway, Jeanette Hop wasn't even up for reelection, had to run again against somebody who was showing his picture. It's not allowed, it's electioneering, city council. Look into those neighborhood council elections. People voting who never went to VNNC but came over here and voted for these people with their cheat sheets. We need to bring back Jeanette Hop, George Thomas, and Maria Skelton. We need to bring them back. It's unfair.
Thank you, Donna. Members, Item Number 6 is now before us. Mr. Bonin, would you like to speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this deals with a piece of legislation in Sacramento and taking a city position on it. A few months ago, an exceptional member of our delegation, Laura Friedman, submitted a bill which would create uniform, some baseline uniform standards for regulations for mobile dockless devices, which is a wise enough proposition because these things start and end trips in different cities. Somewhere along the lines of the industry that this bill seeks to regulate kidnapped it and changed it and put in a provision that would forbid us from the core of our enforcement mechanism, which is to be able to compel data from these companies. Instead, it was changed to something where the companies would provide the data only voluntarily. And saying to these companies, we trust you, and coming up with any sort of enforcement mechanism or regulations based on that is absolute folly. We initially put in a resolution to oppose the bill. Because of that, the mayor's office has been working closely with the author of the bill, and it has changed significantly and improved. It's not quite there yet. So what we'd like to do is change the recommendation to oppose unless amended, and hopefully that will give us the leverage to get the bill back to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. That item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
You're leaving Nuys.
Fourth with, as requested by Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, there's also been a request to send Items 2, 3, and 4 forthwith. Without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready for your next presentation, sir?
Yes. All the inspirational women and everyone associated with it. Hi, Arlene, good to see you.
I'm on both sides.
All right.
Surrounded.
So by now you all are familiar with the annual Inspirational Women's Luncheon that's hosted by the United Chambers of Commerce. I wanted to tell you a little bit about that. I was, I had the good fortune to be with the chamber this morning at their breakfast. But this is, this is an amazing event honoring inspirational women in the Valley, and this is the fifth year of that event. And Vaheed, who's over there, you should be over here with us here, Vaheed Korsine, we were talking about the origins of this event. He and his wife, his amazing wife Vanessa, they were at another chamber event where it was organized by women, and there were five men being honored. And they said, you know, we got to flip the script on this. We got to flip the script. And so he and another man, Mark Levinson, who's with the chamber, they got together and they flipped, and they created and worked to create an event that will honor women. And it's an amazing event, and it's been going on now for, for five years, and a lot of women who truly inspire are part of it. And this year you had a great forum, and my, my wife got to partake as a, as a moderator on the forum, and I know everyone enjoyed it. So it's a pleasure, before I introduce the, the five inspirational women, I want to introduce Armita Stafford, who will speak briefly about the United Chambers. She is a member of the Chamber Board, and she's going to speak to us here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you. Yes, my name's Armita Coleman R. Stafford, and I am United Chambers Chair this year, so I'm very excited to be here. Thank you for this amazing recognition. A little bit about United Chambers. It got started back in 1977, and the goal of United Chambers is really for the San Fernando Valley, it represents 17-member chambers, representing over 2,000 and 4,000 small businesses, in coalition with 32 other chambers and business organizations. And our goal is to be the united voice of the Valley and represent the small businesses. And to your point, we recognized them earlier this morning, and it was just a great event. But one of the other things that we do is through the chamber, is really do a lot of the business advocacy, a lot of the networking opportunities for the chambers. It really had to help the chambers themselves be successful in representing the Valley. One of the things that we do is quite a few of the events, as you was pointing out earlier, you know, the mayor's luncheon event, the business recognition, but really important, and yes, Vaheed and Mark, thank you so much for flipping that and really recognizing this amazing women and starting that event, which is very well-recognized, very well-deserved, and excited that you ladies are here. So thank you.
Thanks. And I could talk for hours about each of these inspirational women, but we've had a lot of presentations, and I've been told we need to move quickly. So I'm just going to speak very briefly about each of them and give them a certificate. Arlene Alpert is community leader. Let's give it up for Arlene. She's used her skills as a social worker to great effect as a board member of the, of the CDI Child Development Institute in the West Valley, to name one of the many, many, many organizations that you're part of. In addition to chairing my domestic violence Bobcat team and doing all the amazing work that you do, we really appreciate you, and we appreciate the chamber for recognizing you as inspirational. Next, Yvonne Chan. She is educator and, and founder of Yvonne Next Street, Next Century Learning Center. Her center serves 3,000 students and have helped promote economic growth in high-poverty neighborhoods. Amazing woman. I'm, what, I, years ago, 20-plus years ago, when I worked for Berman, I got to see you take off and create the first, you know, converting a regular public school into a, into a charter school, and the way that you did it and turned around a school, and have done so, you know, have helped educate so many kids and turn their lives around. It's, it is, like all of you, truly inspirational. Number three on, on the inspirational women, Natalie Hill, who established the Hold You Foundation. Let's give it up for her, which helps the parents of sick children who are facing financial hardship, supporting them through their child's illness. Amazing work, truly done with, with heart and soul and changing people's lives. Next, Jean Sinatra. Let's give it up for Jean. She serves at-risk youth with the Jeopardy program, bringing together business and residents to support the LAPD officers and their programs. Again, another inspiring woman. And finally, number five of the five inspirational women on the fifth year of this program, Brenda Young is an award-winning teacher at John R. Wooden High School in Reseda, and an inspiration to all of her students, also changing lives one at a time, and then in a much bigger way with all, with all the groups that she deals with. So I'm going to give you each a certificate. Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Chan, Arlene, Natalie, and Jean.
Thank you.
Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Mr. Mister Bloomingfield, before you walk away, I'm so sorry. We've got two members that would like to speak. Ms. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Smith.
Come on back for one second. Sorry about that.
I need Dr. Chan to come back. But it's also, it's also good to see Arlene Alpert. Arlene and I go back a number of years. We used to serve on the, on the Scholarship Fund for Opportunity Through Education, San Fernando Valley Scholarship Program. Gosh, it must have been 20-something years ago. But the lady that's known me the longest is Dr. Yvonne Chan. She was my assistant principal at Sharp Avenue Elementary School, always kept us in line, but was an absolute trailblazer in the northeast San Fernando Valley with creating the most remarkable academic institutions with Yvonne Next Century Learning Center and all the schools that have come to follow. You were a catalyst in letting folks know that poor kids are capable of learning and excelling and being the very great leaders that they are capable of being today. Thank you for investing in us for so many years. Thank you for your incredible example of leadership. This is a well-deserved honor, and I'm, I'm proud to know you and proud to have had you as part of my life for so many years. Congratulations.
Very well said, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Smith?
Well, thank you. I also rise and commend these ladies. First of all, for sitting for an hour and a half and listening already to all this. Bob said he's sorry it got so late, but a lot of it was Bob, so thank you anyway. It's a real tribute that you ladies would sit through. Anyway, I want to rise also to recommend, recognize Arlene Alpert. I have known the Alpert family for a long time. We won't say how many years, but a very long time. Fine representative of our community, and Lee gets an awful lot of cred for things that Arlene actually does. And so I wanted to straighten the record out publicly forever that, Arlene, you're the driving force in the Alpert family, and you do so much work, particularly with the Jewish Home for Aging and the Executives Committee, some really fine organizations, Tarzana Hospital, the list is very long. So you're an honor to have in our community. I'm blessed to have known you, and thanks for bringing your husband along once in a while.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bloomingfield. Congratulations, ladies. Members and members of the audience, I'm going to ask for your patience. We do have another presentation, so I will ask for the remarks to, please stay a little shorter than usual, just because we are about to lose quorum, and, and folks need to get to other meetings that they have scheduled. So Mr. Corretts, are you ready for your presentation, sir? This will conclude our presentations for today, and then I will go back to our speaker cards. So thank you for your patience.
Colleagues, it is with bittersweet gratitude that we are recognizing Tom Henry today upon the occasion of his retirement after 30 years with the city. I know that many of you have worked with him over the years, as he's served as a Valley planner and as a planning deputy in several council offices. Aside from the fact that he worked as my planning deputy over two summers on loan from the Planning Department, we've been friends for many years, and I'm pleased to lead this send-off for you, my friend. Before Tom came to my office, he worked with council member Dennis Sein, and before that, he gained the notable attention of council member Joel Wax in 1989, when his career in Los Angeles and as a planning deputy began. And that was also when my wife started her career with the city, also 1989 with Joel Wax. So they were colleagues at the same time. He then later joined the rank and file of the Planning Department until today, which is his last day. When we say city family, Tom and his wife Susan are really a product of that. During his tenure in CD2, Tom met his future wife, bought a house in Glendale, where he also served for six years as a transportation commissioner, and joined Susan, a dedicated talent and talented teacher, in raising their two daughters, Olivia and Savannah. One of the things I wanted to share with you is how Tom has been instrumental in quietly helping to fund and permit affordable and special-needs housing projects throughout the years, including the first high-tolerance housing for homeless HIV-positive individuals, shelters for abused women, low-income housing with daycare, housing for adults with learning disabilities, low-income senior housing, and much, much more. And sometimes when you work with a colleague, you don't know what helped to mold their hearts and their spirit and their careers. And so I should tell you, he was born and raised in San Francisco, but we won't hold that against him despite his lingering love for his hometown's appropriately detested baseball team, the Giants. Over the years, Tom has made up for his San Francisco roots.
Three-time World Series Giants.
Well, they might eventually catch up to the Dodgers, where there are many appearances in the World Series. But Tom has made up for that by showing his love for the city of Los Angeles almost as ardently as his love for the grateful dead. And so using their lyrics, I would say that sometimes we live no particular way but our own, and in the case of Tom, that couldn't be more true. One notable fact about Tom is that he served in the Peace Corps as a volunteer, as a rural community developer in the Republic of Fiji from 1982 to 1984. This, among other amazing experiences, wet his feet in the profession of planning. He ventured on as a world traveler, crossing the equator three times, and being a globally-conscious citizen of the world helped him earn a full scholarship at USC, where he obtained a master's degree in urban planning in 1988. I think once you know that, you can see how Tom's devotion to public service is tightly woven with his great skills and humanity to help others improve their quality of life and community. Well, Tom, now it is your turn. We thank you for your lifelong community service, both to your friends, your family, and to the city of Los Angeles. I'm proud and honored to lead this send-off as you plan for the future, and in the words of the grateful dead, don't tell me this town ain't got no heart. Tom Henry, your heart and soul are cemented in the foundation and the best of Los Angeles, and for that, the city of Los Angeles is incredibly grateful. So to quote the dead again, it's time to hang it up and see what tomorrow brings, and we wish you well as you keep on trucking. Now it is my great privilege to ask former council member and colleague Dennis Sein to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You want to be ejected? We can still do that.
No, no, excuse me.
I know you are. I'm sorry.
Thank you, council member.
Wait, who's talking?
Welcome. I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello. How are you?
Good morning. Good morning. Well, thank you.
Good morning. Nice to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Madam President. And council members, it's a pleasure to be here. I was notified a couple days ago that Tom would be retiring after this 30-year career with the city of Los Angeles. He was my planning deputy for many years, served 12 years in the city council, and he was always involved in the development, the planning, working with the community. When it came to issues that affected the community, neighborhood councils, et cetera, Tom was always there. Loyal, dedicated, very concerned about the impact on the community and working with the community groups. He did that continuously for the time that he worked for me. I can still remember when he worked for Joel Wax, when I was with the Los Angeles Peace Protectively League, meeting with Councilman Wax. Tom was always there. He's been a dedicated, very, very dedicated city employee for all those years. I still get Christmas cards from him, and I sent him an email a couple days ago since he's retiring. Don't forget the Christmas cards, which is a documentary about the family and all the travels that they do. But he's a loyal, loyal person for the city of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, grateful for all the work he did with the planning, Warner Center project, and many other projects, as Bob Bloomingfield, your current council member for the 3rd District, is dealing with the continuing development. But he's been the voice of the people, the concern of the people, and dedicated to the people of the city, and I don't think you'll find it. We still have those?
Just a reminder.
A more dedicated person, a more dedicated person to deal with planning deputy, it's planning issues in the city of Los Angeles. So on behalf of myself and the whole crew that you worked for for many years, congratulations, and thank you for indulging me on this beautiful Friday morning, and we always welcome this council to the San Fernando Valley. So gracious, and thank you very much for my honor to be here to honor a former member of my staff. Tom, you are a hero of all people.
Tom, Tom, you've got this, right?
Now I'd like to ask Tom to say a few words in his own defense.
Wow, this is a, I guess first of all, I want to thank God, because this is not an adjourned motion. Also, I just feel it's so, I'm very humbled. I mean, you had honored first responders, First Nations, survivors of the Holocaust, tremendous women that have been, found the power of the San Fernando Valley, and then me. I, I just, I don't feel I should be here, but I'm looking at all, I did, the last 12 years was with the Planning Department, and we like to say that we're helping people one sign-off at a time, but it was the 17 years being in the horseshoe, running around. There's some people that I was working with that are still doing the same thing. How you have the moxie to continue doing this, I'm truly amazed. And just to be here today to see the issues that are still going on, one woman spoke about Burbank Airport. That was one of my first assignments. To this day, I don't know how an airport that is in Burbank has their planes take off and land over communities of Los Angeles. But they wanted to expand back, back in the 1990s, and they have not yet, and I hope the fight continues to have more, could be the noise problems. And anyway, I can go on, and I know it's been a long day. Thank you all so much, members of the council, and I feel truly honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Corretts, we, Mr. Corretts, I have a member of the council that I'd like to say a few words. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'm sorry. I know we're running really short personnel, but I had to say something, because Tom and I go back to that day when he came in the council, working for Joel Wax, when we were both staff. Mr. Burnson was chairman of Plumb, and we saw him all the time. One thing about Tom, no matter what the issue, whether he's on the right side or the wrong side, the winning side or the losing side, he always had a smile on his face and, and a real welcoming attitude toward everything and everybody. He treated everybody with respect, and he was just a joy to work with, and he came from SC, what weren't can be wrong. But I just got to say, Sharon, we have to find a way to give bonus points for pensions for people that work for Dennis Sein. That's really, we need to fix this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, we're going to move back to general public comments. If I call your name, please line up behind the podium so we can move quickly. Evy, Roger, Rhonda. There was a woman that, that said she had been called, and she was not in the room. Do you want to come forward, ma'am? Go ahead. Followed by Evy, Roger, Rhonda, and Ralph Burr. Are you all here? You can please stand behind the podium, please, so we can make this quick. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Heather Carson, Silverlake resident, VR host in Rose District. Let's talk about Blackstone Corp., the world's largest corporate residential landlord that owns 30% of single-family homes in LA. The UN called them out last month as contributing to the global housing crisis for their practices of inflating rents and aggressive evictions, where short-term rentals are 1% of the rental market in LA. Blackstone Charitable Foundations gave 3.5 million to entrepreneurship programs in LA, which Garcetti praised profusely, then turned around and spent 5 million to help defeat Prop 10 last year, which would have expanded rent control. You want to compare that with someone who is 59, devoted their whole life to the arts and volunteering for their community, who is disabled and has no other income source and no retirement savings? Matthew Glazney's completely clueless suggestion was that I leave my house empty for five months while you write the vacation rental ordinance. Please allow it to continue till you write it.
Thank you very much. Is Evy here? Evy, are you here? Evy is not here. Roger, Roger, are you here? Roger's not in the- are you here? Roger's not in the room. Ralph Burr? Come on up. Followed by Robbie. Is Robbie here? Robbie is not here. Michael Jack Shaw? Come on up, sir. What about Yanni Sierlis? Okay. Mr. Burr, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Ralph Burrus. I wasn't able to fill the whole name out on the kiosk.
Ralph Burrus, got you. Thank you.
I'm here in behalf of Airbnb. I also am a host in Sherman Oaks. I know you have a lot of important things on your plates here, and I hope that we can resolve some of these issues that we're having. Personally, I was... I generated almost $5,000 in taxes for the city with my Airbnb rental last year. I rent all year round. It's a converted garage, which I think there might be some issues with, but nobody seems to know because we haven't seen any actual ordinance yet. So I hope that you folks will be able to figure this all out, along with everything else you've got to deal with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Want to come on up? Is Rhonda in the room? Rhonda's not here. Robbie? Yanni? Yanni's not here. Jay Holtman, are you here? Jay? Sir, go ahead.
I'm Michael Scholl. I am a native Angelino. I own my own home. I've been an independent businessperson my whole life. The Airbnb opportunity that's come up, and I'm an entrepreneur, I always do different things, and I... but I'm not on a huge level. And with that in mind, this is one of the few opportunities that's come up for citizens, private citizens, to be able to take control of their own income and their own opportunity and do something. And the ambiguity with this particular situation that's come up is going to effectively make everybody that's trying to work within the American dream illegal, breaking the law because we don't know what the law is. It's unclear, and it can't be followed and still be able to work. So either it's going to be crippled and broken, an opportunity that should be great, or it's going to end up just being a situation where people are breaking the law and everybody's turning the other way, and then occasionally the wrong person who somebody doesn't like is going to be put at risk of their livelihood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Holtman. Are you here? Jay's not here. Rachel Coy? Rachel Coy Harold? Stephanie? Grayson M.? What is your name, sir?
My name's Harold Rhodes. I'm Harold Rhodes.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I go? I'm Harold Rhodes. Please take off the one-room-per-day limit for homeowners living in their properties. Low... No limits per day on homeowner-occupied homes. Limiting one room a night just won't work. Many nights during the year, there are vacancies. So if I rent my three rooms in one night simultaneously, it helps tremendously to offset days that are vacant, as I rely on this income to help pay my mortgage. I rent to many people who are in transition. They typically have a job but just lost their place or are looking for a place. They don't want to sleep in their car. My place helps them to have shelter temporarily until they're able to find a place to live. Please take the limitations off the rooms-per-night regulation for homeowner-occupied homes. Give it a year to see how it works out. Also, please, please, please table the regulation implementation date until some of the issues are smoothed out. Thank you.
Thank you. What is your name?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Hi. Please do not limit Airbnb with the homeowners. Airbnb helps my family to be able to afford to live in Los Angeles. Airbnb brings income into the economy of my neighborhood and into Los Angeles. Airbnb does not hurt affordable housing or cause homelessness. Airbnb helps homeowners who can't otherwise afford to live in Los Angeles to be able to not be homeless. Limiting how many rooms and everything that we can do Airbnb with will hurt our ability to live in Los Angeles and have the income to be here. It's just like, just like there's been a Me Too movement, this is our, my home, my choice movement, and that's what we need to be able to have. By being taxpayers in this city and giving money to this city, we need to have a choice of what we do with our homes and not be dictated by what we can do and not do. Thank you.
Thank you. What is your name?
My name is Grayson M. I am here for Airbnb, and I've been diagnosed with type 1 juvenile diabetes, which is autoimmune system disease. And ever since my diagnosis, my parents' medical copayment bills has been... co-main expenses has been the highest in a while. Airbnb has been helping my parents pay these expenses so I can fill this bag with all the medication I need so I do not die. Also, these expenses are just another burden on how expensive it is to live in LA, which Airbnb helps homeowners with. If you limit Airbnb, then my parents do not have the help that they need to pay these expenses, and these are... and there are other people with other issues that get needed help from Airbnb. Please do not limit the days or the rooms that a person can rent their home on Airbnb because it helps people live in LA, the economy, and with medical expenses. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Ana Camacho, are you here?
Yes.
Come on up. Roxana Strokska? Roxana, are you here?
Yes.
What about Kelly Van Patter?
Yes, I'm here.
Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Ana Camacho. I live in Tersana, and I'm with Airbnb. I've been doing it for three years, and it's been helping me to get the payments on the house, and also, we help the community. I direct all the people who I visit in Los Angeles to the restaurants down the streets, to Old Resita Boulevard, from McDonald's, and we bring money to the community, and we need these regulations to be in place. We don't want to break the law. We always want to be in the right side. Why we are taking on ourselves when people on the streets are doing drugs and do something else? Why don't allow us to do the right thing, rent our homes, and be able to part of the community without being hassled? We please ask you to see the regulations and be putting in place so we don't be out of the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Roxana Stroska. I'm a single mom and B&amp;B host in El Surino. On my way to this meeting, I walked by many homeless and a woman pushing a cart full of her belongings. I don't want to become another homeless statistic like the streets outside of this building. Aren't you tired of it? Why would you pass a law that would harm someone like me? Home sharing is my safety net and my right to affordable housing. You see, my mortgage doesn't stop at 120 days. I need to survive the entire year. Revised the ordinance to simply say, if owner occupied, you are exempt. Councilmember Wezar, our neighborhood is tore up. Imagine what you can do with the TOT tax. Need to make Neela exempt from this ordinance.
Thank you. Next speaker. Let me just call a couple of more speakers if I can. Shanique Hughes, are you here? Shanique, come on up. Joa? Anyone here with that name, Joa? Leslie Hope? Leslie, come on up. Go ahead.
I'm a 58-year-old production designer... Oh, my name is Kelly Van Patter. I'm in Neela. Wezar is my councilman. I'm a 58-year-old production designer experiencing ageism. I haven't worked in over a year and a half. I bought a mixed-use building for my retirement plan to support me. I live there. I've been an Airbnb host for four years. All of my savings have gone into this project. I have hosted cancer patients, interns from USC Keck School of Medicine, people visiting their families, and other people who want to move here or cannot afford expensive hotels, and there's nothing in my area. My rentals do not negatively impact my neighbors. We should be able to have our STRs year-round. Otherwise, the fees proposed make it cost prohibitive. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I've been to Wezar's office several times. I've tried a number of times to be in compliance, but have not been given any information on how I can register. Why is this? Please help those of us who are not abusing this amazing way to make our properties, to help support ourselves, and to keep our homes. My question is this: Could you survive on 120 days of your salary? Because myself and many others cannot.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Dark wants to quit.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Hi, my name is Shanique Hughes. I am Mexican-American. I've had the best of both worlds. I've been able to host Airbnb, short-term rentals in Acapulco, Mexico, Mexico City, in Orlando, Florida, and Miami, also here. I really subscribe to the idea that entrepreneurs and homeowners can do the home sharing. And I'm here to be a voice. I believe that you've all heard the problems of what it will cost many citizens in their lives, and they cannot afford living in Los Angeles. So I subscribe to the idea of do not ask what you can... what your country can do for you. But I'm here to ask you, if you can use us, the short-term rental community, I think we can help you solve a lot of the problems that Los Angeles have, if you can just tell us what to do and how we can all come together. There's at least 180,000 listings, if I remember correctly, of people that do short-term rentals. So if you use us, ask for taxes and for manpower. We're here. We care about affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next speaker.
I'm Leslie Hope, a West Side host. We are already paying the city millions of dollars in TOT, while many hotels pay nothing. Yet, the planning department is proposing even more taxes, euphemistically called fees, to fund another unnecessary bureaucracy. Furthermore, since the ordinance first passed in December, hosts have not heard a word from the city about how to comply with the new ordinance and actually register our short-term rentals. The city needs to delay enforcement to work with the hosts to develop a registration process that is user-friendly and actually works. The city cannot afford another failed regulatory rollout after the marijuana dispensary fiasco. Thank you.
Sir, what is your name?
My name is Johan. I think you mispronounced it.
Oh, well, that's hard. It's a J-O-A on the...
It's J-O-H-A-N.
Okay, well, that was not on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on for just a second. The gentleman in the back, did I call your name?
I think I didn't hear my name. My name's Alan, but I signed up in the kiosk.
Alan, I haven't called you yet. And there's no one on my list with that name. But before you move on, Johan, let me just make sure I get Vanessa Johnson. Are you here?
Yes.
You'll follow him. How about Ajanta? Ajanta, is anyone here with that name? Angelina? Angelina? Viviana? Come on up. Okay, sir, go ahead.
My name is Johan Dill. I'm from Sherman Oaks, and we've owned our home for 13 years. We host on Airbnb. I'm here to advocate for a... not a one-size-fits-all, which is... seems to be what this ordinance is about. As you have heard from all the other hosts that are here, we care, we're responsible, and we contribute to the city. And so, you know, we just ask that you not swath all of us in one bucket and to make it more subjective for us to be able to advocate for the type of rental that we have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Vanessa Johnson? Angelina, still not here? Viviana? Come on up. Good afternoon.
I fund crucial living expenses through hosting. I can't register how will I fund my living expenses. My living expenses. I don't know what's going to happen to me in three weeks. The enforcement of this ordinance needs to be delayed until single, simple registration processes are in place. This ordinance goes into effect in the most heaviest part of our tourist season. Enforcement will cause confusion as to bookings and cancellations, results in the loss of income and the TOT tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, remaining council members. Hello. My name is Viviana. I am a Sherman Oaks homeowner. I've been sharing my home for the last three years. Truth, do you think I would share my home with strangers if I really didn't have a need? We all have our financial reasons. For example, does anyone know how much a geriatric care facility costs? Well, I can't afford it. So Airbnb allows me to take care of my 102-year-old grandmother at home, which she's doing better than I am. It saved us, so I ask you, pay attention, please. One fair cost to allow us to do this year-round. One and fair, okay? Make it simple and not complicated. Make it easy. Keep in mind, those who didn't generate any problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Veronica Duran. Are you here? Come on up. Anton? Anton? Barrett Sherwood? Barrett Sherwood, are you here? Good afternoon. Go ahead.
My name is Veronica Duran. Los Angeles Rescue Mission, Hope Guardians, both ran by CEO Andy Bales. Let one of his staff beat me up because I'm Mexican. I had to play dead. I was sent there from LA Family Housing in order to be put on affordable housing list. When the ambulance came to pick up my body, CEO Andy Bales said, "Don't put the siren on. We don't need the attention." CEO Andy Bales told me, "Nobody would listen to me." This is my third meeting. Nothing has been done about this. I save lives. How are you going to let CEO Andy Bales run homeless shelters? He needs to be investigated. I'm saving lives. You guys need to help my life. I was raised by my grandpa, a WWII soldier, and that's why I stand here today. I'm not going to give up my fight.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Dear committee, I'm Anton. I've been an international student, and I've been here for 10 years, and I've been a host for five years. I'm a good neighbor. I'm quiet and clean, and I'm on rent control. But I believe my landlord is satisfied. So two things: affordability and safety. If we're talking affordability, my guests are Angelinos. They're people in between apartments and people who are settling in, and those are exact people we are supposed to serve, and you're supposed to serve, and the regulation will skyrocket the prices for them. When I came to LA the first time, the first day I slept on the street. The first night was in a hostel, and then was a living room I found on a forum on the floor, and another room on Craigslist. And I wish there would be Airbnb back then because it's much safer, there's accountability, and all the great things that you've heard about. So I understand there is fees, and if there is a cut, so let be it by... This is the only thing I can do as an international student, and the only way I can be a helpful member of society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your name?
Hi there, Barrett Sherwood. I've been a host in the mid-city area for about three years, and today I'd like to bring a voice that hasn't been heard as much, and that's the voice of our guests. In the past year and a half, I've noticed a new trend. It's a surge in bookings from locals in transitional housing. This population is not the well-publicized homeless population, but an emergent sign of boom times. This is temporary homelessness for people who are experiencing life changes, often for the better. But LA's unaffordable housing crisis has made finding a place to live much more challenging. This is never part of Airbnb's policy or vision to provide temporary homelessness, but it's gone largely unnoticed and is very underappreciated. So I'd like to put the shoe on the other foot for a second and propose that the city actually pay us a fee because we are part of a solution. This new restriction is, on just my property alone, reduces my offerings by 2/3. That's a 66% reduction in rooms available for this vital population. So this ordinance is, in effect, increasing the potential for homelessness in Los Angeles. So let's please remove the room, day limits, and work together for a solution.
Thank you, sir. Next speakers. Debbie? Debbie, are you still here? Erica F.? Wayne Spindler and Alan are the last speakers.
Hi, my name is Erica. I live with my younger sister, who is a full-time animation student. I'm not currently an Airbnb host, but as we move forward into our third year in LA, we realize that the only sustainable way for us to be here while she's still in school is to use Airbnb. Additionally, my boyfriend, which you just heard, is a full-time international student who is applying for his MBA in the fall. He was in the top 5% of his university in his home country. But because he was an international student, he had to sleep on the street his first night here, and he was taken advantage of by having to work underpaid labor and convenience store jobs just to survive. Airbnb has allowed him to live in LA and go to school. These regulations on short-term rentals will directly increase the homeless population in our city because people use Airbnb to pay their rents and mortgages. You are supposed to be finding ways to decrease homelessness in our city, not to create new laws that make it worse. If you pass these regulations, you will be directly responsible for an increase in more homelessness.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name's Alan. I'm an immigrant from Hong Kong and became a citizen last year. I'm a musician and also a voter of the 1st district. I'm coming to say because it was a great experience for me traveling around the world... because it was a great experience for me, traveling around the world and staying with homes with people around cities around the world. And I'm glad to be a host for the last four years, which I get to share my love for this city. However, when I read the ordinance, and one of the rules, number five, saying that as a renter, I will have to get a notarized permission from our landlord. That simply says there's two classes of citizens. Those are homeowners versus renters. I'm sure that I'll be pretty much shut down from renting my homes after this is enforced. This is just a slap of my face because, just because I'm a renter, I'm a second-class citizen. So I want to urge the council members to really either postpone this ordinance or just take this rule away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, you fucking niggers and gil-sedio. So what do we have here? This fucking home-sharing thing. You motherfuckers, what you did to Sean Murphy. Oh, disgrace. He has to live in fucking Canoga Park, a fucking shithole like Canoga Park, all because you scumbags will not help him get his rent control in order. And you want to tell us about rentals? I tried to do rental sharing, and I tried to lower the price. I was renting to niggers. I love them. And Airbnb, God, everybody goes, "No, you have to rent to these pasty white cocksuckers at above-market rent." It's racist. It's wrong. Defeat this ordinance. Defeat this measure. Let people rent to whomever the fuck they want, including white niggers.
You're done, Mr. Spindler. That concludes, members, that concludes cards for general public comment. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we please all rise for adjourning motions? Are there any adjourning motions to my right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I was just given this news just recently, and it's a sad moment for the city family. We lost our old former general manager of Personnel Department, Maggie Wayland, passed away last night. Maggie served the city of Los Angeles with a remarkable span of 47 years, 14 years as the Personnel General Manager. She held that position until the time of her retirement, 2014, steadfastly guiding the city department during the worst years of our city, and that was during the recession. She's a dedicated leader and a confidant and friend to many and a mentor to many. I know she did a great deal of work at the University of Southern California, training personnel-type people, and she's a great loss in her honor. There'll be more information next week about a funeral.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We all got that email just moments ago. Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions to my right? Mr. Blumenfield?
Great, thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Jason Katz, passed away April 23rd. The memorial will be this weekend. Jason was a friend. Some of you may have known him through the Valley Leadership Institute. He was very active there. He's someone who spent 15 years working to better Los Angeles through his work in public and government affairs for the AJC and the Town Hall Los Angeles. As the Director in Public Affairs and Relations for AJC, he was responsible for running and directing the organization's political and policy shops, and developed and implemented AJC's legislative and political agendas. He lobbied on a variety of issues: energy security, homeland security, counterterrorism, public safety, to name a few. And then, as Vice President for Corporate and Public Affairs for Town Hall Los Angeles, he was primarily responsible for the development of close relationships with businesses and corporate leaders, elected and appointed officials, diplomats, policymakers around the world. He started a group, his own group, Toolshed Group, and was active as a consultant. He has helped shape Los Angeles. It's a very sad day. He's survived by his wife Mallory, his children, Ian, Gabriel, and Jordana. His family would like to relay that we can all help prevent suicide. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 24/7, free and confidential support for people in distress. Prevention and crisis resources are there for those loved ones and best practices and professionals. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Any other adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, have a great meeting. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.